Rob.
Rob Taylorstaff.
Whitney Banker, also an alternate.
And Jim Bonner, alternate.
Andrew.
And on teams, we have two members. We have Phil Vermeer. Phil, can you say hello? Phil?
Vermeer says hi.
Okay, and we have Linda Jones. Linda, we cannot hear you.
You did?
Yeah.
Linda, say hello, say something. No, we can't hear you.
She's frozen.
How could you be frozen in Florida at this time of year? Really?
She's probably by the pool.
Linda, yes, no?
That one.
There you go.
There you go, you're on.
Whatever you did, that's great. We can now hear you. Now we can't. Rob, is there anything that we can do on this end?
We keep hearing you, yeah.
I think it's delayed.
It's a delay, yeah.
It could be just.
Okay.
The wifi.
Well, let's continue. On their agenda, first order of business is public comment. If anyone is here for anything that is not on the agenda, now is your time to make any comment that you would like to make. We hope everybody has had an opportunity to, I don't see the table for the signing sheet, Rob. Oh, it's over there.
It's all tables for town meeting.
Okay. If you have not signed in yet, please do so, so that we know who's here. And hearing nobody asking for comments, we'll proceed to the next item, which are public hearings. Number one is P240201. The town of Enfield is seeking major site plan review for the renovation and expansion of Whitney Hall, which will continue to serve as the Enfield Town Office and Library at 23 Main Street, map 34, lot 37. The work on this project will be completed by Breadloaf Construction of Middlebury, Vermont. Let me explain to those in the audience how our hearings work. First, we get a presentation. I guess in this case, Ed, you're going to present for the town?
Jim Pulver from Breadloaf will online.
Oh, he's online, okay.
To represent.
All right, so we will get a presentation from Jim Pulver from Breadloaf Construction. And then we will open up the, we'll have questions from the board members. And then after that, we'll have questions and comments from the public. I would ask that everybody be respectful. One person speaks at a time, please. And after we have all of the questions and comments from the public, I will close the public hearing. The board will deliberate and reach a decision. So, without further ado, let's see if we can have the presentation.
It's dual screen. That's the problem.
Yeah, it's a computer setting.
Yep.
But I'll do what it is.
Rob, are you running the presentation?
Yes.
Okay, great. Do you want to just roll through it in the order that it was submitted?
Yes.
Give me one sec. He's having trouble pulling it up. Hold on one minute.
All right.
So that I do the screen single.
David?
Yeah. There it is.
You might have already.
I was just thinking that. You read by mind. Dangerous. Okay, we should be getting those here. Just give me one more second. And this one. All right.
Hey, go ahead, Jim, we're on the cover.
Okay, I don't see it on my, oh, there we go. Now I see it on my screen. So here we are with the initial view of Whitney Hall with the addition on the back. This is from the southwest, basically, you know, in Main Street, looking at the front entry of the building. We haven't finalized color selections for the exterior paint colors. But I think this represents initially where I would want to perhaps suggest beginning a discussion on the colors. Something a little similar, perhaps a little more gray or a little more gray-green than the blue that is on the building currently. Rob, if you could go to the next slide. So this is the view from the northwest, basically looking down the driveway to access the parking lot. The police station would be off-screen to the left. You see the rehabilitated Whitney Hall in the front, again with the addition toward the back. We would be maintaining a trim line on the new addition to match up with the trim on the historic structure. We're also looking at creating a entry vestibule. You see that there, the transparent entry vestibule with the canopy at the juncture between the two buildings where the new addition meets the existing structure. And the height of the new addition would be quite a bit lower and subservient to the historic building. And there would also be a, let's call it an indentation or a break, a notch between the two to find where the two buildings, you know, attach to one another. Rob, if you want to go to the next slide. So here we are. We're basically down behind the police station, looking back from the northeast toward the building. We can see the entry vestibule there at the notch between the two buildings. That would be the primary entrance to the building. And about two-thirds of the way to the left on the addition, there's a smaller entryway there. And that would be an entryway to allow entry to a meeting room and bathroom space that could be utilized when the other portions of the building are shut down. The height massing form, very simple. We're looking at putting all the major mechanical equipment on the roof of the new addition. And it would be screened with a parapet. So the next slide. You can see how the massing works a little bit more here. The entry vestibule, the little portion there projecting out between the two buildings. The indentation, the notch that I referred to between the historic structure and the new addition. This rendering does not show the mechanical equipment that would be on the low-slope roof of the addition. And it does indicate the existing elevator tower over travel that is that dark area in the back portion of the connector between the two. Yep, right in there. And we'll be able to access the roof from, there's a doorway there, that dark, yeah, right there, we'll have access to the roof to service the mechanical equipment. The next view is from the southeast, looking back toward the building. Again, the massing of the addition stepping down where it connects to the existing building. And we're really trying to be respectful in terms of massing and form and trim and materials relative to the historic structure. This is an image of the current site plan indicating the footprint of the existing Whitney Hall. It does show the elevator addition and the two-story vault addition on the east end of the building. And then it shows the footprint of the police station. There also to the north to kind of give you some orientation of the overall site. So this is the site plan indicating the proposed addition, the footprint to the rear, which would be to the right of existing Whitney Hall. We're leaving the elevator in place, but the vault will be removed. And we'll basically be building over the top of the existing elevator machine room. We're preserving the existing stair tower in the southeastern corner of Whitney Hall. So there'll be an emergency exit out there and a walkway along the southern edge of the building to connect to the parking lot. The primary entrance will be in between the two buildings on the north side. And the secondary walk to the, what would be the meeting room and the toilet room is just to the east, also from the driveway. I think we have a plan. I think we have a plan later on in this packet. It's been a little while, Rob. But I think we have a plan later in this packet that shows the light pole locations. I'm not sure if we want to look at them on the site plan before we move to the floor plan.
Let's do that.
No, I would go back to the site plan. It might be a little bit easier to see the light pole locations on the site plan. And there are two poles, yeah, if you zoom in a little bit there. On the northern edge of the parking area, there are two poles. They have the red clouds shown around them. One there and one to the left. And then on the eastern side of the parking area, there's one light pole toward the middle. One light pole towards the southeastern corner. And one light pole towards the southern portion, here in the handicap parking area. Okay, so when we get to the electrical photometric plan, we'll look at the photometrics for those lights, but they're a little easier to read on this particular site plan. So just a quick overview of the floor plans, if you'd like to go there. And Ed, chime in here if there are any particulars that you want to touch on. I wasn't going to get into a lot of detail.
Okay, and we can talk to it on the light plan when we get to it, but there were two lights along the walkway.
I want to point out the lights that are mounted on the building when we look at the photometric plan. So this, the dark gray walls, the pocheted-in walls, those are basically walls that are within the footprint of the existing building. And that's being rehabilitated primarily for town office space. There'll be mechanical storage, electrical rooms toward the front where it's buried into the building or into the grade. And then as we move toward the back, in the middle there, we have the clerk's area and work counters.
Yeah, these will be the work counters right here. That'll be open to the public.
Yeah, and that would be the public lobby area adjacent. Then we have, as we move into the addition, we've actually stepped the addition down about a foot and a half to gain additional headroom for mechanicals and ceiling clearances in the addition. So there's a ramp and a portion of that lobby right there. If you come in, there's a public toilet area, unisex toilet immediately upon entry. So that whole lobby area will be open, circulation, seating. And access to the right from that lobby area will basically be into the work area for the town officials, the assessor, assistant town manager, town manager. And.
That's both AP payroll will be right here. I can go ahead and talk to this. It might be easier.
Okay.
And then this section here is what we designed. This will be a shared kitchen, so this will be for the employees' lunchroom, those types of things. But we put it on the other side of this locked door. So the public enters this side to use the meeting room. They'll have access to the meeting room, the little kitchen area and a bathroom that we can lock and separate from town hall, so it'll be very accessible. We kind of went through what was in here. If we go back to this side, there's another restroom here that'll more than likely end up being an employee restroom, so they'll have a lock on that door. Then this is the historian's office with secure storage behind it. And then we'll have an extra office here, which I think will be secretary of the checklist for now. And then this has been redesigned slightly. This office area, we're actually going to bring the wall straight across, and this will be storage and an extra office space if we need it. And then we brought this all the way across, so we'll have an electric room here, the IT room. And that'll be there. Like we said, this is the clerk's area. And then this is what used to be Elisa's office. If you know of it, it was an old jail cell. So it's really thick brick. It's structural and stained there. And we're going to keep that for the secure storage for the clerks to be able to lock stuff in there.
And then since this plan was submitted, we also made a shift in the location of the drinking fountain and the toilet at the entry lobby. And enlarged that storage area between the two toilet rooms.
Oh, yeah, right here.
Yep.
So that's one large storage room. Ready to go to the library?
Yep. So beginning on the left in the front, basically restoring Willis Nook. The existing stained glass in there would remain. We would reactivate and make the sliding pocket doors reoperable. And then the large area in this portion of the library, if, excuse me, large portion of the library would be the children's area. To the lower part of the sheet in the front, a storage room, a bathroom. Then immediately adjacent to that, an enclosed teen room. And then we have, adjacent to the stair, an area of refuge. And then directly across from that, the checkout desk and the librarian's office immediately behind the check-in desk with another open kitchen area accessible through the library. And then moving into the addition, we have the adult reading space. And toward the far end on the southern portion of the addition, we have two meeting rooms, two smaller meeting rooms and one larger meeting room.
Yeah, these are the two small ones. And then the bigger meeting room. And then these will be the computer desks to be used by the public.
On the upper level, in the front of the building, we have a conference room. A vestibule between the conference room and the large meeting room. What we're planning on doing is preserving the proscenium arch, the front of the stage and the curtain for the stage, and building a wall behind the historic curtain. And then behind that wall would be circulation to toilet facilities, the elevator, the exit stair. And there would be another room for either storage or, forgive me, Ed, the checklist, voter checklist.
We moved them downstairs, so we redesigned. And we actually redesigned this area in the past couple of weeks. So this will be, these two bathrooms are going to be shifted to this corner. Then the stairway goes through to open that door for access to the mechanical. And then this will be the kind of the storage room. And then we're going to have a little electrical vault in there too for some of the electrical equipment. And then we have the walkway to the elevator and the stairs down.
Yeah, the recent change on that floor plan was due to trying to get some pipes through structural elements. And then finally.
What are the green rectangles for, Jim?
Oh, the green rectangles, they were a holdover from where we were trying to work with JJ on locating potential openings through the roof for mechanical equipment. And they were, generally speaking, they were not used. Unfortunately, they didn't get removed from these plan diagrams before the plan commission packet or planning board packet was made.
This is the upper level. There's not going to be a lot done here. There'll be ladder access up into the rooms where the mezzanine is now for storage, just ladder storage.
But that space will be maintained full height.
Yeah.
And then this is the overall roof plan.
Do you keep it in slope?
No. It was a discussion, but no.
And these are the two-dimensional elevations, which basically represent what you saw in the three-dimensional modeling that we opened up with. So here we have the photometric plan. The little blue dots are the sight lights. And the the colored numbers are actually the number of foot candles on the ground associated with those fixtures. And as Ed mentioned previously, there are canopy lights and wall-mounted gonts on the building. There are three of them on the south elevation and one on the east elevation. And they are to illuminate the sidewalks. And then obviously, the canopy lights are to illuminate the public entryways.
And as you can see, they're very directional lights. So they're right there, they shine down into the parking lot and they cast very little light backwards around the grass and area around.
Or the property. All of the blue double zeros mean there's no light at those locations. And then we have cut sheets on the proposed light fixtures. They're basically low-profile, low-glare, LED lighting. The color temperature is 4,000 K, which is a fairly neutral color. And as illustrated by the photometric plan, you know, they're really designed to put light down on the walking surfaces and parking areas as opposed to allowing light spill to adjacent areas.
There they are.
Yeah, so that is the pole light for the parking. Can you scroll over to the right? Ed, you know? Okay. Thank you. And about, it's page three of three would indicate the characteristics of the fixtures on that line, the lumen output, the mounting, color temperature and so forth. And then.
Overall, we really worked hard to keep a soft, nice glow. So the LED lights are not real bright, even though they're directional, they light up enough for safety, but they're not going to be that really bright white LED light that you see at times. It's a lot more of a warmer light. But they're not gonna be that really bright white LED light that you see at times, it's a lot more of a warmer light.
And these are the fixtures that are actually mounted on the face of the building. And there are also a downlight cutoff fixture. Same color temperature, same finish as the pole lights.
Is there any more you wanted to go through, Jim?
Uh no, we have, well, there are two of these W D G E fixtures, a one and a two. And I believe um the only difference between the two is the um spread on the. On the um, on the fixtures, you know, the the photometrics, uh the light spread. Um. And there were uh a couple of other fixtures that were toward the back of the package. Which were the fixtures in the canopies. Basically, uh cylindrical downlight.
Yeah.
I think you'll, it'll, it'll be the Gotham fixture. It's got red. There you go. So these are at the uh, at the entrance canopy. And the remaining cut information is all technical detail on the, on the uh. Canopy lights. So that was the extent of the um. Of the materials that were. That were put together for review.
All right, thank you, Jim, uh we appreciate the presentation that you gave. There are a few things that we usually look at in our site plan review. I'm sure you're familiar with them and I wonder if I just missed it or what. Um first being your stormwater drainage plan. Uh perhaps you can go back to uh the site plan and. Indicate what provisions you're making, uh where the runoff from that slope roof is going. And just general drainage out of that parking lot.
Can bring that up, I can talk about that a little bit too.
Ed, go ahead.
All right, so um mainly for stormwater, we have around here, um there's perimeter drains around both. Both buildings to help catch any runoff there, push them down. Speaking with the civil engineer last year, um or last week, they daylighted to the property to the south of us. But now we're gonna turn those, they're gonna come in and they're gonna connect together down both sides of the new building around. And then into about the middle of the parking lot, somewhere down right in here, there's a, there's a. A storm drain catch basin right now, we're gonna be replacing that catch basin, those perimeter drains will go in there. And then stormwater will flow to there as well. And it goes through the original stormwater pipe that comes from the street, it actually catches from Route four. Comes down and then it daylights behind the parking lot down here. That's what it does now and it'll continue to do that.
Okay, can I ask a question?
So, go ahead. I'm, I'm guessing because you aren't increasing the amount of impervious surface here that. You weren't required to treat the storm water?
No. Yeah, our shoreline permit was approved, we did find last week that we're gonna need to replace this pipe, we were gonna leave the existing pipe. But when we cambered it, it's completely gone pretty much in there, so. Um we're in the process of finalizing that civil engineering and we'll be getting a weapons permit for that.
Okay, um obviously we're on town water and sewer. Um. Snow storage, where's that gonna go?
More than likely, it'll be pushed off these flat areas, we won't have any curbing around the parking lot, so it'll be a lot like it is right now. We'll just put to the sides and off the back a little bit.
Okay. Uh. Solid waste, recycling?
We take it from the building and take it straight to the transfer station, so we're not gonna have like an onsite dumpster or storage area, we'll continue to. Take it straight out of the building and it'll be delivered by DPW downtown.
Okay. Uh. I, I think that covers most of the um criteria. Uh what's the total count on parking spaces under the new configuration?
Yeah, I was curious if you lost or gained, I'm sure you lost a few.
Overall, we're gonna gain, actually, um it's pretty similar here with the restructuring of this. And then once the police move out, we'll be ha, we'll be utilizing this area, we're gonna put the handicap parking here, so it'll be straight across the road into there. For handicaps, so overall, I don't, I can't read this enough to know the count. Jim, are you still on to give the count? Do you know how many spaces?
I just took off my glasses to see if I could read the drawing to uh figure out how many spaces there were. Uh give me a second and I'll count them up though.
And Jim, would you break out uh the handicap spaces? As a, as a separate number?
So in the um. Area to the right of the addition, there is a total of uh thirty-one spaces. With one handicap parking space included in that number, so one handicap parking space. Um. And thirty uh regular spaces behind the police station, we've got one. Eight additional spaces behind the, behind the police station.
What, what's to become of the police station?
We have not decided that yet.
So. Well, okay.
Is that a separate lot, Ed, the police station?
Yes.
Uh is it conceivable that at some point in time that lot might get sold off?
Not possible, but possible, but.
Isn't the lot lying right down the side of the.
I, I thought it was. So that would um potentially knock out a bunch of parking.
What's the total um town employee?
Yeah, I don't think you, um, there's no way we would sell the entire lot.
Right.
You know, if there was, I would have to really look into if it was possible to subdivide in a way to sell off part of that. But I don't, I don't see that being a probable solution.
Okay.
So you'll have plenty of parking, cause you've got more than you did, than you do now, so you, you shouldn't.
Yeah. And uh. The building in general is not taking on any more services or new services, so it should be exactly the same. We were talking, me and Rob today, it might actually get a little bit less use with the theater not in there, but we will have some more meetings and stuff upstairs.
Okay, um according to our chart on zoning regs. Four oh nine. Section five, if you have between twenty-six and fifty. Uh total spaces, we need two handicap spaces. Do you have that?
Uh I think that can be accommodated. Um basically that space that is, doesn't have a handicap symbol on it. Where the hatched area is could be deemed to be a handicap parking space.
Yeah, and like I said. With the whole scheme of things, when the public safety building is done, we'll put some handicap right behind the police area. So. On the other side probably, but yeah, it'll be right across from the main entrance, it'll be closer for.
Um, board members, questions? Then, let's, let's go Tim first and then Kurt.
Well, yeah, I was handing up the board meeting.
So I wanna push back on the, the lighting, um color temperature choice. I managed the facilities that colored, that catered and prepared them out of school and we had set up some new, new uh. Pole lighting around campus. That was in that four thousand range and it was just too blindingly white. And we had spent a lot of money to remove those and put in a warmer color, we settled on a three thousand, which gives you a nice. A nice pleasant nighttime warm color. And in fact, I was gonna suggest as in our zoning rewrite, that we might even make that a standard. Um so I would ask that you, you consider that, that color.
I, I would agree with you, Tim, that four thousand was, was a little harsh.
Not fun to look at.
So I believe that those fixtures are all available in the three thousand color temperature. And um as an architect, I wouldn't take exception to what you're. Um what you're saying relative to the three thousand and four thousand uh color temperature.
Okay, uh Kurt, you have a question or a comment?
Um, a couple, yeah. One is, I happened to take a walk around the exterior fencing um today and just. I don't know if it's necessary, um it, behind the police station is they dug like a drainage swale. Small drainage ditch, but there's no soap fencing there. And it looks like it really should have some fencing, soap fencing putting, we're just putting that in there. Um.
I, I can ask him, it goes all along the back.
Yeah, it was all along the back, which, and it does, and it's, it's there because they probably had to. Um by now it hasn't had enough rain across the parking lot to cause it to blow out or anything like that. But that one area is just exposed and it goes right into a drainage swale also, so.
I'll mention it.
Yeah.
Um, put it in based on the shoreline permit.
Yeah, the, I guess the top floor, what is now the theater balcony. Uh theater area is gonna be just an open space, no designated. Use at the moment.
Gonna be the main meeting space for the town.
Okay.
So what we use here now, we'll move down there.
Oh, okay, and um the balcony, yeah, the balcony, is it balcony?
Yeah, balcony.
Yeah, um that's staying as is.
Yeah, it'd be a ladder storage area, there won't be stairs to get up there, it'll be a, like a pull down ladder for storage. The balcony itself um does not meet code and would be extremely expensive to bring to code.
Yeah, so like an attic pull downstairs, echo concept, yeah, okay, versus a void, well.
Yeah.
Yeah. And instantly, um, any, will be any issues with snow and rain between the. Existing building and the addition, with that, the way it looked like there was gaps there?
Yeah, it looked, it looks like Whitney Hall is wider than where the entrance is. So that's snow and ice coming off, gonna have the same issue we have at Whitney Hall right now, which is, it all comes off in that one spot. I'm just wondering if that, if there's a way. You could, I don't know how you're gonna move the snow out of there, can you, can you go back to there?
Yeah, I mean, from the pictures I was seeing, like.
You've got this gap. You've got a gap in between the buildings, which means the snow and ice is gonna go on that area, but it's wider than your addition. Which means it's going to be coming, can you give me a back shot?
The other side, yeah, but.
Or a top shot, I mean, I don't.
The other side.
The reason I asked about the slate is if you have a.
Showing where the entrance, the uh public entrance. Right there. They, that, that appears the Whitney Hall roof is going to come down onto there. Which is then gonna bring it down to the public entrance.
But not like it does before.
No, no.
They're, they're removing the slave roof.
Right.
And I am certain that they're super insulating the attic in the.
Right.
So you won't have the ice dams forming, I think you're gonna be fine.
Okay, are you.
Worst case, you could put some snow guards up there, but.
Are you taking, you're taking the slate off, what are you putting, are you putting shingle or you're putting wood, I mean, metal? Asphalt, okay. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, some, some snow guards, like you're saying, would probably be just, while you're up there, just good to have them on there.
Punch a few in.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was the only error I saw that might be a potential issue, is snow and ice coming off right in that public area.
Okay, my last question is, I'm assuming they're gonna upgrade the ventilation and cooling system?
Yeah, it'll be heat pumps.
Yeah, full. Better ventilation upstairs, the top floor.
Yeah. It'll burn.
Um, is there a signage plan yet?
Not yet.
Okay. Uh Linda and Phil on the sunny side of the world, any questions or comments?
Looks good to me. Big improvement for the town. It all looks good.
Okay, Linda? Linda, we can't hear you. Oh, there you go.
He's on a, it's on a delay. Yeah.
Yeah. You got a bad connection, Linda.
We can't understand what you're saying, you have a bad connection.
Chat, she wants to say something else.
Okay, um. Let's uh go to questions and comments from the audience. Anybody, Dave, would you stand and state your name and where you live, please?
David, okay, Main Street, um what is the slope? If any, on the new um office building there?
The roof slope?
Yeah.
Jim, do you know that answer?
Uh, let me see, I'm not muted, right? Uh there would be a minimum of a quarter inch per foot to the drain. So in, in many areas, it'll be, it'll exceed a quarter inch per foot, but it will not be less than a quarter inch per foot.
Does someone else have a question? Is that Sharon?
I'm confused, I'm sorry, I can't really translate the information for the answer in the previous question, but we can hold off on that for a minute. Um, this is my brain doesn't compute that, but um. It's, it appears that the roof is flat on the Enfield Office of Town Complex building.
It's closer to a flat roof, but it does have a slight slope to drain.
Why would we build a flat between the lane with the snow and needing ice removal and snow removal? I don't understand.
Jim, do you wanna take a crack?
It's a common, common, um.
Right, yeah.
Assembly, we've got the several flat roofs at Cardigan. From the south, that was one of the first questions I had twenty-five years ago, but I've come to realize, they actually work well.
They work really well.
Yeah, you don't have to deal with the, the stormwater runoff and the snow.
You don't have to deal with the the stormwater runoff and the snow, et cetera, like you do the main building. So with a membrane roof, uh. They'll be fine.
Yeah.
The hospitals, everything's flat roof at the hospital, all the additions, regular.
Yeah, the high school.
All the new apartment complexes in Lebanon, a flat roof.
Yeah.
As as long as you take care of the membrane and don't abuse it. That's the key.
There's one on.
I see that. Is that Gene Patton? Gene, you have a question?
Yep, I do. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so um, first of all, I want to preface this by saying. Um, that I know Breadloaf does amazing work because I got to tour the Hartford building. Um, and having grown up in White River when I was a child, remembering what the building looks like, it's absolutely beautiful inside. Um, however, my comment is, and I know um, it's not up to me to design and whatever else. Thank heavens, I guess, for all of you, um, but I just feel like the addition to the library. Feels to me and looks to me like sort of like a box kind of stuck to the back of the library. And I guess I was feeling like so many people are worried about the historical. Um, take of buildings that it just feels like. It's doesn't seem to fit in, I guess, that's my comment. So, and then I have a couple of other questions, but I'm wondering if this is a time I can ask them. Because I'm one of those uninformed planning board attendees, learning the process. And um, I'm a little perplexed, I guess, about. Um, why these projects are now coming to the planning board when the library is already well on its way? I guess maybe you can explain that to me.
Um, I'm gonna ask Ed to explain that, but I I will preface it, Gene. By saying that because it is a town facility. Um, the town is not subject to any of the town's zoning regulations.
Okay, that was gonna be my other question.
This um, this site plan review. Um. Is done essentially as a courtesy and as a lead by example. And I I'm afraid I'm gonna have to say that it probably should have come before the board a bit earlier. But um, this is where we are now.
Okay, but I guess if the, if the town doesn't have to adhere to its own. Rules and regulations per se, then, I mean, I guess it doesn't really matter at which point it comes before the board, right?
Well, it came before the board for the stuff that you're hearing right now, that, you know, let's talk about the warmth of the colors. What's the stormwater looking like? It's still in a space where we can change all that. So, you know, we decided to get it to you and, you know, when we could, we've been. I don't want to say rushed, but we hired Breadloaf last summer and we've been moving through the design phase. And it was decided at the M fact to see if we could get that, get this building started before the public safety. So it it happened relatively quickly and we got to the plans when the plans were ready to be, be brought forward.
The other, the other thing is most plans that are coming to us, it's outside businesses where we haven't seen anything. We've seen this going along for about two years now. Um, and a lot of public input has come into the M fact on the same thing. I mean, I agree, they're here out of the goodness, not out of the goodness of their heart, but, you know, we we cannot change anything. But we can give them ideas and they're here looking for ideas.
Yeah.
Okay, that, I mean.
I will note, Gene, that our next hearing for the public safety complex, they have not broken ground on that. So there's an opportunity for more suggestions and more uh flexibility.
Okay.
Also, the meeting board's not a forum to discuss the aesthetics of the building.
Right.
Anyway, we wouldn't, you know, that's up to a committee of.
We're not gonna talk calls.
Even though you're. That's a site issue, you're right.
Right.
Gene, are, do you have any more questions?
Nope, I think that answers my question, so, um, yep, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Gene. Anyone else in the audience have any questions or comments, gentlemen?
Right. My name is Craig Sanborn, I live on George Hill Road. I want to know something. So did I hear correctly that the idea is to rip off the existing slates on the roof of the old town hall? And replace them with asphalt singles, but right here?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, now being that slates last an awfully long time. And asphalt singles could be maybe thirty years if you get good ones, and being as. Well, that's been an improvement for a good many centuries now. Can someone tell me why it is that these asphalt singles are somehow better than slates?
I don't know about better or longer lasting, but we have, we have roof problems and it's extremely hard to find anybody to work on that slate. And extremely expensive if you have a cracked slate to get one to.
I see.
Used to have a guy that worked at K-way on slate roof there, but he retired. Yeah, no, it's getting hard statewide, everybody.
It's a lost art.
Yeah.
Bring over some Welshmen and hire them. Who do you think they'd figure out how to split the plates?
Any more questions or comments? Yes, ma'am.
Hey, Regan, welcome to the room. What will happen to the um existing front entrance and porch as it stands now and that door?
Good question. Ed, can you answer that?
Pretty much staying intact. I don't know if we can pull it back up, but the the whole front look is gonna stay the same. And you'll be able to enter into there, into the library, just like you do now.
Okay, even though the new entrance is gonna be.
The new entrance will be in the back. We may be doing away with those parking along the street because they're, well, one, they're dangerous. You can't see around them. So we're gonna be looking at that, so it probably will not get used much, but it it can get.
Just to follow up on that, will there be stairs from that front entrance like there are now?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
That whole front stairwell is staying pretty much the way it was. It's gonna get painted and redone, but not a lot's gonna be done in that whole stairwell tower area.
Go ahead.
What will be the maximum capacity for persons in that um upstairs meeting room?
I don't know that offhand, but as many as can fit there now.
Yeah, hundred.
It won't, it won't fit town meeting, but it'll be a lot bigger than this room per normal meeting.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Okay, I am going to close the public hearing portion of this and it's time for the board to discuss. Ed?
Yes.
I could answer that last question if you'd like me to. If there's time, I believe um that we're looking at uh about. Two hundred and eighty occupants for the assembly space on in the hearing room.
Yeah, I was gonna say, because the theater had a hundred thirty seats in there.
Yeah.
And they were just around the sides.
Yeah.
It's way more people than you really want in.
Right.
Yeah, it would be full.
You can do uh the two eighty plus with um, you know, without fixed seats. And with fixed seats, we can do a hundred and twenty one.
Yeah. They adding sprinklers?
There has been sprinklers, but they are replacing.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, board members, questions, comments?
You said you're you're moving the existing vaults, um, and it's just being relocated or a new vault, so.
They're gonna be relocated downstairs to two rooms that are technically secure storage. We've checked with the Secretary of State and the, you know, the officials in Concord. And we don't technically have to have what would be considered an NFPA registered vault. So we're gonna, we're gonna double drive all those rooms for fire protection and.
Worst case scenario, there's a fire and you lose all your historical records, yeah, type of thing.
Somebody wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion, we accept the site plan as proposed.
Second.
Conditions?
Lighting.
Lighting.
We can sort of look at.
Do you want them to bring a signing plan back?
Uh, a lot of times that's done uh once the building is completed. So I don't see any, you know, um. You will do it when the building is completed and you've got.
Yeah, and it'll probably be fairly minimal like it is now. We don't plan on putting a big billboard sign out prior to.
No big neon lights flashing.
Well, one of those circular things that go over the whole building.
All right, um. Motion has been made. Who seconded?
I did.
Brad did.
Okay, Brad seconded. Uh, because we are virtual, we have to do a roll call. We'll start with Phil. How do you vote?
I.
Unmute, unmute. Phil votes aye, Linda? Linda, thumbs up or thumbs down, because we can't hear you. Okay, Linda votes yes.
I heard the.
Okay.
Eric.
Eric.
Dan, aye.
Brad?
Aye.
Tim, I'll vote aye. Um, your site plan is approved with the condition that the exterior lighting be changed to three thousand K.
We'll look into the other comments as well.
So. All right, next on the agenda, if I can find the agenda. Is P twenty four oh two dash oh two. The town of Enfield is seeking major site plan review for the construction and future use of a consolidated public safety facility. Police, fire, ambulance at six Granite Place. Map six, map fifteen, lot eighteen dash three. The work will be supervised by Nagley and Chase Construction of South Burlington. From off. Um. You're going to.
Yes, this is Nick Fiore from Engineering Ventures. He's gonna, he's gonna talk about the, the site plan here and what we have to the building. And we have Mark, not me, on online, who's the architect that can talk about the structure.
Okay, Andrew from Nagley and Chase was gonna be online as well.
Crucial, I think, for the. I saw him.
Okay. All right. Yeah. So if you're all familiar, um, at least a little bit with the site, it is um, it currently a um. Basically a grass field that is just to the east of Granite Place on the north side of Route Four, uh, just before. Blanket on that extra distance, extra gas. West Bronx, yeah, sorry. Um, so this uh, this image that was on the cover of the plan set is a um, a rendering of the building itself. So uh, five bay emergency vehicle um wing on the right side of the building. Um, the east side, turn then towards the middle of the building, the gray area is mostly uh various office spaces. In the back is where um, there's a B uh police station with Sally Port in the back and a jail towards the back. And then on the left side of this um is a a public entrance to a um, to a meeting space there as well. Um, I just gotta scroll through to the existing additions plan. That you can't quite see.
That's interesting conditions.
Yeah, right, I mean, the distant conditions is that it's the the um, the the area, the land itself is relatively flat. With a slope up from Route Four and then Route Four slopes down as you go to the right from Granite Place. That slope just gets a little bit bigger, um, and the land was um. The piece of the land that the building is gonna be built on um was subdivided off of land from um the granite. Um, the granite shop, uh, that's just to the north. So that property land that goes across um up and diagonal is a uh a new property line and that's been completed.
Yes, yeah.
Yes, scroll down. So this is our site plan here. The big gray mass in the middle is the building itself. Um, we have a um, a entrance off of Granite Place. Um, for most of the public and employee entrance will come off of there with uh parking is the the first turn in. And then a driveway that goes around the back. There's a couple of additional parking spaces. And then the um, up at the the corner, um, the top right corner is just a um. Um, a salvage yard, a um.
Ultimate place for holding.
Yeah, yeah. In fact, in fact, yeah, thank you. Um, and then the driveway wraps around the building and then comes to a large apron in front of the. Uh, emergency vehicle bays. Um, so that that driveway around will mostly only be used by by the emergency vehicles. They'll drive around it. And then be able to back into the bays themselves, um, couple of sidewalks around the site as well. Um. And then for utilities, um, currently there are short stubs. Um, of sewer and water that go into Granite Place from Route Four. Sewer will go continue up Route Four and wrap around the back of the building, uh, and then water will come off the stub and. In Granite Place and just run across the front of. And then um access the, you know, enter the building near the uh, near the um. The emerg- the emergency bay doors. Um, for stormwater, we have a number of features for stormwater. Um, I stated this was an undeveloped lot. So it's, you know, a lot, a lot of grass out here and so we're turning, we're adding a lot of impervious surfaces. So on the left side, on the east uh east side of the, or west side, um, that's a gravel wetland. Uh, system there that'll take runoff from the parking lots and from the driveways behind the building. Um, it's a two bay system, so it'll just kind of look like two depressions and the surface will be planted. It'll be vegetated surface. When larger storms come in, water will fill up, but then it'll subside, um, so that there won't be standing water in there. And then on the east side, um, we've got a larger rain garden. Um, it's a, a single base system, but it's similar in that it uh. Um, it'll be a vegetated surface with the vegetation, it um treats the water with root uptake. Um, and again, the water subsides after the large storm, so a large storm comes in, you'll have some water, but then it'll, then it settles out. Um, it is flat roof, but it it's a multi segmented bunch of different pitches. Um, to a a number of roof drains and those roof drains are routed to the um. Uh, to the rain garden on the east side. Um, the same time we submitted to you, the day after, um, I submitted plans to uh the DOT. Uh, because we do need a driveway permit for being on Route Four. We received some comments back from them. Um, particularly this plane you're looking at has a straight grade or basically a straight grade from the. Emergency bay doors down to Route Four. They asked us to pull that back a little bit, so it's gonna. Route Four is is crowned, that crown's gonna continue into the, into the driveway a little bit and then kick back up. Um, that'll just help keep that that a little bit, you know, um, clear, especially with from snow and ice. There is a culvert that goes under that new driveway, uh, so it'll direct water to that. And then we also actually added a trench drain across the driveway, across the apron. As low as we could and still get that water into the um, into the rain garden. Um, it's just the elevation difference. We couldn't get it down to the bottom, couldn't quite get at the property line, but it's um, it's about three quarters of the way down. Into the um, down the apron, uh, and that, yeah, kicks that water over into the rain garden before it gets released. You can see a line on the um, on the right hand side diagonal down from the rain garden. Down to the right away line, and so that's what the discharge is. Into, it's exactly essentially into the existing drainage ditch that's out there now. But it's all controlled, so total runoff, um, total runoff rates after development don't exceed existing runoff rates. For various number of storms, two-year storm, ten-year storm, fifty-year storm and so on.
Um, let's scroll down.
This is just our, um, construction erosion control plan, um, just showing cell fences and stuck, um, soft pile areas. Um, and, and other various methods that the contractor stuff to keep in order to keep, uh, erosion from, from leaving the site. It could only, it prefer to get happening. And then we just got some construction details in through here and then we do have a lighting plan as well. Oh yeah, sorry, you can't really see, can't see that either. Um. But there is a lighting plan, there's a number of, uh, light fixtures around the, um, the site itself, similar pole lights. Um, as I saw with the last project and then some building mounted lights as well, the doors, um, the public doors and then also the, um. Over the, um, emergency bay, um, access doors. Our cut sheets that we supplied had a temperature of thirty-five hundred. Um. So, you know, if, if the, if we want to change back at three thousand, I think they're all, they're all available in three thousand. Um, so that's, that's fairly easy.
It might be.
Go ahead.
Might want to have an exception for, um. I don't know, i- i- when the fire department is, is called or the police have to, you know, the lights come on and illuminate the. The bay openings. That's an area where, okay, maybe the brighter white light might be, uh. Might be desirable and I think we should probably allow, allow for that. If, if, if you guys think that's what you should do. They're not on all the time.
Oh no, I mean, I'm saying, they should, I would hope they put on motion sensors, um, on something like that.
You know, they are not, they're motion sensors. We have to look at the, yeah.
And I, if you don't, if you don't have those, then I'd say stick with the three thousand.
I, I would actually suggest that the, uh, the bay area. Um, have light constantly, um. I'm assuming that there's gonna be some sort of a sign as indicated on the cover page. And for people not familiar with the area passing by who might need to find. Medical help or a fire or police, um, having that pole front bay area illuminated. I think would be a positive move and I see several people in the back nodding their heads bigger than I sleep.
I think that's good. I knew they had some lights. I don't know if these ones do it that cam until there's motion, so they're on all the time, but then they get a little brighter. Something like that might work.
I have that in my driveway.
Yeah, I think we can, we can talk with the, uh, the lighting designer, we can come up with a, a scheme there. There will be, um. To Route four, there will be signs on Route four. So as you're approaching, it'd be, it's a traffic. Um, size, sign, roadway size sign, but it, it indicates that, um, you know, you're approaching the emergency vehicle area. Um, so those will be a little bit of warning, just a little bit.
Yeah, and we will have, when the fire trucks are leaving, there'll be illuminated signs that.
Flashing lights.
Yeah, I think they're gonna be on the side of the roads, almost like the, our, our F B for crosswalks. We're looking at solar powered ones that we're not.
Yeah.
Right. Electricity across.
Yeah.
Uh, keep going.
Okay, yeah, and this is just showing the turning movements of the, um, um, the largest vehicle making its way around the building. It's kind of rotated a hundred eighty degrees from what we were just looking at, but driving around the building, um, up towards Route four and then, and then backing in.
We did use the ladder truck, right?
Yeah, that's, yep, exactly.
We use the dimensions of Lebanon's ladder truck, even though we don't have one and don't really plan to have one, but we figured let's design it for the big truck. And then it'll, it'll work for everything else. If sometime way down in the future, one gets, needs to be purchased, then it can handle.
So even if they come here for training.
The consequential aid.
Yeah.
Well, here.
For, for trainings.
Right, or training, yeah.
Um, and then, did we skip past the, uh, elevation views of the building?
Thank you.
Okay, and this is just, we did a, a, on the profiles there, we just did a vertical simulation of it as well, just to make sure. Because we do have a bit of grade change between the finished floor of the building to Route four. So we, we ran it just to, to make sure that all, all works. Um, and then we did it again. This is showing the original design. We did it again once we, once we redid the driveway, um, after the DOT's comments and it's. Six inches, eight inches of clearance at the minimum, so, um, it did all work, all worked pretty well. Yeah, it's the ladder truck, it's fine. Those are the lights. We must have passed it, um. It should have been after the main site, but before the, but before the. Yeah, before the turning movements. It's just one sheet.
What's total number of parking spaces?
Twenty-seven, I think.
Thanks, Ian.
We say ten, they're putting in twenty-seven.
You know, I really liked that. That tile block on.
Oh yeah, it's great.
Make note of that and, and, and.
Oh, yeah, nice.
Yeah.
Yeah, we just get into that habit, cause other towns actually can make us do it.
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah, it is. It's, it's twenty-seven total spaces, um, on the main parking area. Um, that's got twenty-one parking spaces with one ADA space and that's a van accessible space. And then behind the building, there's six spaces with an additional eighty.
So you got two ADAs.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what you need.
Yeah.
Um.
How high are the, the, uh, fire doors? By station.
It's, it's on that elevation point, um.
They're fourteen feet tall.
They're about, yeah, fourteen feet tall.
Fourteen.
Yeah. Oh, that probably will still fit inside the building.
Well, yeah, I, that, that was my question because of the slope.
Yeah, we, we.
Not gonna have an issue.
Yeah, we come out flat first, out of the, with the driveway.
Okay.
And then it, and then it slopes down. So it's about like four percent coming out of the, out of the, um, parking bays and then, and then it slopes down. Just. Yep.
Um, I noticed, I think somewhere, there was a parking space that had an E V charger. Did I dream that up or is that true?
We're not putting E V chargers outside, but.
Are you putting E V chargers in the complex at all?
No, we're putting conduit in the police Sallyport bays for the possibility of future chargers to go there.
Good.
Oh, I think we, um, we had it on our. Oh, yeah, it's on the pavement markings. It, it does include a, but you know, typical pavement marking for an E V space, but if it doesn't get used, it doesn't get used.
Okay.
Going around peppering questions from all different angles, did, are we sticking to a, 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 a format or do you want to? I have a question on permitting.
I, I'd say go ahead, go ahead.
For this one, it's small enough, it doesn't need, um, site, or it doesn't need alteration of terrain permitting. Um, now there's no wetlands in the area, so it doesn't need wetlands permitting. Um, so it's, it's this review. It is, um, DOT review. Um, and the DOT, they factor in the stormwater, that, that, that's a big thing for them is. It's essentially needing stormwater requirements of alteration of terrain, because the DOT kind of makes you say that, that's what it has to do. Um. Yeah.
Anything else to?
And then we'll, we'll need a sewer connection permit. For the, for the sewer lines.
And Kurt?
Yeah, um, you talked about having public, you know, public, someone from Route four is a public, seeing the building going there for. They need safety or whatever. Is there going to be any, um, call box, um, old-fashioned? I guess Lebanon's still requiring them and if larger public buildings, you know, the pole, all the lever style still. Safety.
I don't believe it will be. And there are no floor drains and. Or are there floor drains in, in the bays?
In the bay there are, yeah.
Yep.
There's a trench drain in the, the apparatus bay.
Yeah, the apparatus bay, yeah, big trench drain and those go to, um, there's a grit oil separator just behind the building. So it'll go into that and then into the, um, into the drainage from there. Yeah.
Another question on your parking spaces. What is the current and the expected employee, um. That would be using this building? Is it gonna be taking up, I'm assuming, most of the spaces?
No, it'll be about, I mean, right now, there's three to four on Friday at a time.
Yeah, but if you go to full-time fire departments, or if there's a call, how many fire, uh, personnel are gonna be showing up in their personal vehicle? Type of issue, so.
Yeah, if there's a call, I mean, during the day, you don't get a lot of response, so. The six spaces in the back should be plenty for most of that. If it's real big. There'll be some spaces around there. Um. There's no plan to go full-time anytime soon, but that would be.
Yeah.
Two to three people. It's not gonna be a large number of people. Um, the only place we may run into. Some sort of issue and we can work with the neighbors there as well, is if we have a big event going on there and then there's a fire call or something at night at the same time.
Yeah.
But.
More meeting and trainings.
We'll deal with that at the time and we're looking at some other places where we may be able to put some gravel type.
I'm saying if there's a, having a training session at that spot, you know.
Right.
What, what's the total combined membership presently of police, fire and E M T?
I don't have those.
Ballpark?
I don't know. That respond to.
It's not.
Under twenty. Under twenty would be responding to a fire.
Yeah, I mean, if they were all there at one time, we have, what, six officers and. Probably fifteen firefighters and four.
Yeah, so you're, you're still, yeah, way more parking spaces than.
Yeah, the only time we might have an issue and, you know, we have a, he said meeting room in the beginning, but the meeting room in the. Front of that is an emergency operations center. That we made in a way that can be used for public meeting space, training space, those types of things as well. Um, for the dual purpose, you know, we won't, we need an emergency operations center, but we don't need it every day. And so being able to use that space as well, um, for that. So if we were to be hosting a meeting or something there and we get a big call, something like that, that might be the only time that the. The spaces there would be a little bit short, but, you know, we figured that those would be in the evening and we can work with Shaker Grant. Shaker Hill Granite and those places to be able to. Work in their backside for that. For, so for the normal day-to-day use of this building, the parking spaces we'd have are more than adequate.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, board members, any other questions?
Yeah, I've, I've got a question.
Phil, go ahead.
I got a question. Have you given any thought about putting solar on the roof or are you making provisions to do that in the future? Cause you got a beautiful southern, southern slope or southern view there to the sun. And it could.
We talked about it for a while. The other thing we've talked about was on the other side of the retention ponds, we have a lot of land where we could do possible ground mounted solar.
Okay, if you, if you're digging dirt and putting in conduit, you know, it's pretty easy to put the conduit in early. And have the conduit there so that if you ever do decide to do solar, you just slide the wires through. It would be minimal expense, but in the long run. My experience has been you, you'll get your, you'll get your money back in ten years and then you got fifteen years of free electricity for that facility.
Yeah, we will be looking for grants for that.
Not only that, but the, the new law now gives the town the ability to get the thirty percent rebate or the thirty percent credit. So thirty percent is gonna be paid for by the federal government right out of the chute. I would give it some thought.
Phil, do they need, uh, three-phase power if they're gonna feed solar back to the grid?
They've got three-phase power there.
Yeah.
The building will have three-phase power. And they can, and they can feed it behind the meter. They can feed it in behind the meter and take care of all the, all the electric needs for the building and then sell the rest off to the, to Liberty. Or, or use it on a town well.
Yeah. Anything else, Phil?
That's all I have for now.
Linda, anything? You can't hear Linda. I'm gonna assume no. Um, members of the public, it's your turn to ask questions, make comments. Gentlemen in the back, state your names please.
I was wondering if there's gonna be any upgrades to Granite Place Road at all? The inlet coming in, if you guys are gonna be using it as far as the fire trucks entering that way and circling around.
Um, not right now, cause it's built to the same road standard as Route four. Um, anything we do cut, we will fix and repair.
Right, what about the width though? That's what, we'd come and go from nine grade of place with large trucks and trailers. And there's a telephone pole on the right as you come out, so you have to kind of swing into the other lane to get around it. And out on Route four in the other lane. So if they're trying to come in and we're trying to go out, it could be an issue.
Did we hear that? And, sorry, we only came, uh, the building, the problem this proposed. Um, did I hear him say that, so there, everybody's gonna come in on Granite Place, go around the building, all the trucks and so on and so forth?
Yes.
And then they back up and go into their, so, okay, so that, so on a given day, obviously, we don't know how many times that's gonna happen. Or how many times. My other thought is, is that we, uh, currently, that road is roadway. Is shared by private properties now.
Yeah.
So we like just paid to have that road. Upgraded.
And we have talked to the private owner and about the right-of-way and we'll participate in that.
Okay, so maybe we could be in touch with you and kind of get that figured out.
Now that takes over, like the plowing, salting, that sort of thing, or the first section past my driveway?
Not right now, but, but what we will be.
Okay.
We'll figure that, but we're gonna need to plow up into our.
Right.
Parking lot and keep that cleared, so.
Okay, has any, has anybody, has the fire trucks that we do have, have they gone out of Granite Place? Onto Route four and turned right, just to see what the.
They have not, but they're not going to be.
Oh, that's right, cause they'll come.
So it'll only be when they're coming back and the fire trucks do not go in and out that often. It won't be multiple times a day.
Okay.
One, maybe two times a day in a, in a normal.
Okay.
But you won't see them very often. The police will be turning in and out a lot more often.
Yeah, I mean.
Is Grant, so the engineer guy, is that Granite Place Road now up to width for a standard? You know, road?
Yeah, it, yeah, it's, you know. I can't, I can't remember what the exact dimension is, but, you know, there's always an upgrade, um, but it's a, it's a typical road.
Yeah, there's, there's no line on it, so everybody.
That goes wherever.
People from Shaker Hill coming out that go paying their way home. We're trying to get in and they're parked literally right in the middle because they're trying to get a better sightline to.
Oh.
To get out and then it just everything snowballs and then of course they pull out and we sit there for, you know, five more minutes before we get. The same thing, we're long, so we need a big hole. We literally gotta be able to see over the gnoll.
Watch what I was red light.
We're four A, we're, we're definitely four.
And get them the push button for the flashing.
Uh, thanks, so we're, we're.
That's all I'm concerned about, that.
Other questions? David?
Uh, a month or two, D- David both again, uh, Middle Street, uh, a month or two ago, um. Dean Patton attended uh, this meeting with me. I know he was uh, quite concerned about the transition slope. Um, between the. Exit onto Route four for longer fire trucks. Um, and um, I'm not. Uh. That, I, I'm not technical in that situation, but I would certainly respect um, this long experience as a, uh. Excavator and landscape, uh, um, when it comes to um, slope and transition. Has that been addressed in the interim?
Yeah, we um, we, we have a program that we, we. We build the, a model of the fire truck in this program and we run it um, through the grades. Horizontal and vertical, um, and make sure that, you know, we, we know. Where the axles are and where the bumpers are in relation and, and, and run it through there and um. Yeah, and make sure all the clearances work.
Any more questions from?
Yeah, we showed that diagram and it's in your package, right?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, I have one question, another question. Uh, will there be fuel stored on site for all the vehicles that will be housed there or will they come up here?
No, the only thing that'll be stored on site will be propane for the generator. But there will be no. Like diesel or gasoline stored on.
Come up here for that. Any other questions from the public? In the closed public hearings. Board members, time to discuss. Hearing none, uh, would somebody care to make a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion that we approve the Enfield Public Safety Facility Site Plan. With the condition of a driveway permit from the state of New Hampshire.
Somebody wanna second that? Kurt, you can't.
Second.
All right, uh, seconded by Tim. Roll call vote. Phil?
Aye.
Linda, thumbs up or thumbs down? Thumbs up?
Dan, aye. Brad, aye.
David, aye. I guess we're good to go. Good luck on the.
Go forward and go.
Thanks for coming in.
Thanks.
Okay. Back to my agenda. No conceptual.
Why don't we take a five minute?
Yeah, all right, let's take a five minute break. Let the chatter happen?
Yeah, really.
Yeah, and that'll give me time to uh, visit my cheat sheet and my report.
Really nice job. In my humble opinion.
He avoided a few questions.
Did not provide all of this. Anybody wanna turn, wanna turn that back in here?
Yeah. Just, just one of those, that's, that's, it's all they gave me for that. Come back.
Look at this.
We'll reconvene at five, ten after.
I mean, just for the town records. You need a full-size set.
I will, I'll see if I can get a set through.
Every developer.
They can do it, exactly. What, put that whole thing?
No, they, right, they should have submitted a full-size set. We need one for the town records anyways. So you're just being cheap on the paper.
Talking about Whitney, uh, Whitney Hall?
Yeah, the Whitney Hall package.
Yeah.
Right, I'll get after it.
But as I says. They do this, they do this, they do this as a courtesy. And they don't have to follow their own.
Is that state law that towns don't have?
The only thing they have to follow is they have to follow the state rules. Which means the two, the two handicap spaces.
Isn't that fascinating?
And the state.
Well, the state doesn't have to follow theirs.
Follow theirs.
Right.
They only have to follow the feds.
I think it kind of boils down to, no, I'm not sure I can state this the right way, but. The zoning regulations are. Proven.
Yeah, exactly.
We vote on having some public facility built.
Right.
Yeah, so. There's. It, it's in the public interest. If you. Still. Unhindered by. Unless.
Because a small number of people could potentially block it. Also what the town wills.
If, I know what you mean. That's exactly what it is.
What, what, what you mean is the town is voting, the whole town. At some point, on the project.
Yeah.
If whoever showed up to the.
But the town, the town is voting on the project.
Very small number of people who showed up to that particular town meeting.
But even if the site board just proposed something there is, they stand along, this is what we're doing. That's what we're doing.
It's unfortunate that Whitney Hall. Because it's like the entire law is impervious.
Yeah.
There's no stormwater provision here, so all that stormwater is gonna go right.
It just goes right into the.
I thought you had a good question, I, I.
Yeah, well, it is, it is, it's going to and it always has.
It'll be there.
And you haven't added any impervious surface either.
There are ways to.
They've actually taken a little bit away with that landscaping and on the side of the building.
Right.
There are ways to treat that underneath the parking lot.
Right.
Yeah.
Could oppress that issue, but then I think.
That would be worthwhile mentioning. The impact though, because they are still, like that has not been finalized.
For this one.
The underneath the parking lot, like they're still doing engineering for that pipe, they said, so that would be worth. Bringing up if there are.
If there is.
Solutions that can help that situation.
Pull the sand and salt out.
Well, it's, I know it's not, it's not cheap to do.
Right.
It, that might be a significant budget issue, this late in the game is.
However. The Whitney Hall parking lot, so, so one thing, I'll, I'll make a suggestion as a. If we looked at it now, the Whitney Hall parking lot does fall under TIF.
Right.
So there is a possibility that if it was in the benefit of the district and the benefit of the town, that. There could be an alternative method to do stormwater treatment of that parking lot.
One of the reasons we're. Kind of anxious about this is uh. We were talking the other night is, is that. When you open up the, the village to more, more development, it starts to get right to the edges of. Property boundaries, you know, with parking lot, whatever, the stormwater increases and. How do we factor that into whatever we write in the new zoning ordinance?
Let's, let's save that discussion for. Maybe later this meeting or. Yeah, later this meeting.
Yeah.
So uh, it's now about twelve after, so we're reconvening. And uh, select board report, Eric.
Uh, all right, we've been here a while, we've briefed a really nice update from the Community Power Group. Uh, the biggest highlight is. Program went into effect on April twenty-third last year and from then until the end of the year. Enfield power bills are two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars lower than they would have been had everybody been on the uh. Utilities power program. Talked about Methodist Hill, decided to move forward with a. A plan similar to what's uh, recommended by that group. Uh, then just had town meeting prep. Um, I would decided to just move forward with black asphalt on our sidewalks. Eliminating the stamping and painting that was there before, um. Formed a Emergency Services Advisory Committee to review those services within town. And had our annual meeting with the Department of Health, the health officer.
Have we gotten the um, legal opinion back yet for Johnson?
Yes, they got that. Sometime within the last, sometime between the last select board meeting and today, they got it.
Awesome.
So yes, we've got it, but it has not been brought forward to.
Great. Progress.
Yes.
Anything else, Eric?
Uh, no.
Any questions for Eric? Okay, um.
Yeah, I got, I got a comment. Rob, can you get rid of that screen?
Oh yeah, sorry.
Thank you. Now we can see a little better.
There we go.
A comment Phil or just one of the screens taken care of?
I just wanted the screen taken care of so I could see all you guys.
Okay, good. Legislative session last week was a ten-hour marathon. No fun. Uh. Important bills from, at least from our perspective as the planning board. Uh, there was a bill, I think I've mentioned it previously, which would have, would have allowed. postings of zoning board meetings to occur on the. Town website as an alternative to publishing them in local newspaper. That bill failed in the entire house, so we save. The local newspapers. Um. There was a bill to create village districts. For the purpose of analyzing, protecting and remediating water quality in lakes. That would allow uh, several communities that share the lake. To take a common approach on watershed management. Uh, there was a lot of procedural stuff on that and. It was ultimately, it failed unfortunately. And um. There was another. Bill that um. Wanted to tighten up the definition of, of a butter. Um, currently, the language says that any person aggrieved. And that could be anybody who lived in China, for instance. And uh, or people across, you know, across a river or whatever. Um, so that bill, um. That bill passed. So we have a new definition of, of butters. That will go into effect in the distant future.
Passed the senate too?
Uh, no, hasn't, hasn't done that, passed the house.
What, what do they want to do here?
Um, it, it changes the definition of an a butter. From any aggrieved person, uh, not in the butter, but it, well, it does change on a butter. But the idea is to limit the number of parties that. Can appeal a decision.
Okay.
Okay.
And it's limited to a butters and then it defines a butters.
Two hundred feet still?
It involves a lot of geometry and there are lines that are projected. Out into. Across the street, across the stream and then fifty feet across, uh, aside from that. And we'll see what the senate and the governor do. Uh, the purpose was to uh, keep people that live across town. From objecting to. Development.
People were coming in saying, I'm, I'm a taxpayer in the town, it's going to cost town, that makes me an aggrieved party, I can appeal this.
Yeah.
I thought that was always. We had a case played.
Right.
The sphere of court said, you're not, you're not.
But we're, we're, we're putting that into statute.
Putting into statute.
Trying to.
So you can't get into court.
Yeah, so. We will see where that goes with the senate and the governor, but I think it was a good bill. Uh, particularly considering the. Housing need for housing.
The universal mimism of uh, of people these days.
And for anyone who was here or watched the hearing. Last night on the variances for Laramie Farm. Um. There were a lot of people that were not directly a butters that are concerned about Laramie Farms and. Uh, this would essentially eliminate their right to appeal. It does not. Eliminate their right to testify. So they, they still maintain the right to speak in favor of their position. They just can't be a party to the appeal.
Yeah.
And that, that seems like a fair way to end all. That's all I got, Rob.
Well, I'll just give you a quick, quick update. The, the, the dominant thing for me has been this uh, Laramie Farms thing. Last night was a very big, probably the biggest one that I've had since I've been here. Be it forty-plus people. As guests last night, plus board members and staff. Uh, we had, I think, over.
Yeah, how many people online?
Yeah, I think it was, what was it, twenty-eight or something like that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was a lot, I mean.
Hard to tell when you're online, how many people are online.
It's so frustrating, I mean, Mike. I turned the volume down for him, cause you know, as you're starting up the meeting, the people are coming in late.
Yeah.
And it gives you that little audible. He was driving crazy, so I turned the volume down. Try to limit that, but kind of helps me see that there's people coming in too, so we let them in, but. Uh, it was a big deal, I mean, there was a lot of, obviously a lot of buildup to it. Um, I do have some materials in my office that were mounted on poster board that were, we put up on this wall and. Around the room and stuff, so if you wanna see more of it, um. The two, it was two variance applications last night. They did not apply for their special exception at the same time, which I thought they were gonna do, but. They're kind of dosing it, metering it. So they will come back at some point if they get their variances, which. Remains to be seen. They, the meeting last night went on till. About ten o'clock last night.
Yeah.
Yeah, and uh. You know, the general flavor, I mean, there's, as I said, NIMB and the non, people, we need housing, but I just don't want it there, you know, like that kind of a thing.
Yeah.
You're gonna see it from Canaan.
Right. Um, so we're gonna, that's one of the things that was talked about a lot last night. Susan Brown is a member of the ZBA, is very much like, I wanna do a site visit, but. There's really nothing to see. It's raw land and, and it's also very inaccessible at this point. There's no road up there.
Backyard, look up the hill.
It's wet, I think, by the time April comes, there's gonna be ticks everywhere.
Right.
So uh, we think we actually came up with a good idea. Mike Dean's friendly with Bob Cusick.
Yeah.
Who has an aerial drone.
Yes.
And that would be the way to get a good view is to sort of fly it up there and kind of zoom around and look at topography and so forth. So that may be what we do. If that doesn't work, we're gonna try to figure out some way to do some kind of a site visit as a.
Simple as a night.
Yeah, it would be, it would be on the night.
Oh, it would be on.
Typically, if we do a site visit with ZBA, I don't know if we've done any, we've done some for, yeah, we've done some sites. We do it the hour before, so six o'clock.
Right.
Instead of seven for the ZBA, for us it'd be five thirty.
Although for our, um, cell tower, we did that on a Saturday afternoon.
That's right, we did. I remember that.
Or morning, whatever.
And that was, I mean, that was, even that had a pretty decent road up in there. That was.
Yeah.
That was bushwhacker too, when we went all the way up in there. That was kind of fun because that was maybe May.
The other thing is Bob's, um, drone has memory. What you could do is run a tape and have them just project it.
Yeah.
Rather than everybody going up there with his own, with the drone.
Somebody requested balloon test for the buildings.
Just to see how high it is.
To see how high they are.
What's it gonna look like? Like the cell tower?
We did it with a cell tower, so if the cell tower's gonna be ninety feet tall, they run a balloon to ninety feet up. And it's not just a little balloon. These are big balloons.
They salute.
That they fill up with, you know, tank of helium and it, you know, it's a little unruly when the wind starts blowing because you can't really see when they try to flop around. But if it's, if it's a still day, they can get you the height that you can kind of, and actually the cell tower, if you remember, they did like a photo simulation where they could take the, the balloon test and superimpose the tower to give you the height relative to the tree canopy and so forth.
You could actually get a, a, a pretty good sense of the lot. When you pull into, and, and I don't know if you want to do this, but you could pull in a convoy, you could pull into Jakes.
Right.
Up that valley, you can see pretty well up to the site and.
There's even spots on Ford.
Go up Maple Street.
Yep.
Um, certainly there's several areas there that you can.
Yeah.
See, um, and then I'll just toss this out there. The woman from Canaan you just mentioned, um, lives up the street from me. I just happened to walk up. I walk up that street a lot and I walked up there this afternoon and turned around and sure enough, she's got probably the biggest view of that.
Right.
Project than anyone.
So, um, it was, we, it was thirty six of butters that were notified. It's a big piece of land, seventy seven acres total between two lots. And even people over there in Canaan were, were butters. So that was, I mean, there's a lot to it. As you guys can imagine, that one's, that's gonna be big.
I, I have a question. Um, I remember that we had a discussion on this board within the last six months about where we measure the height of a building from.
Yeah.
And I thought that we had decided it was from the street side.
That was my recollection. Yes.
And they were talking about measuring from the lowest story up to the highest point.
Oh, no, they, they were coming in seventy five feet.
Yeah, yeah.
But that's, but that's.
That's not from the street side.
That's not the street side. That's where the garage is.
That's the bank.
The bank, because we're going underneath it.
That's the side that faces.
That's the side that faces the street. There's the street right here.
Well, yeah.
Low side, so that's seventy five feet. You're not gonna count this upper side or these are parking lots here.
Well.
They're showing it from, I mean, they're, I guess, when in doubt, take the highest.
The high number.
I guess.
Yeah.
Right.
Either way, it's a variance, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, but a, as, as you heard the discussion, um, much of the discussion was centered around the fact that it was double.
Right.
Uh, right? And if it were, you know, fifty two versus seventy five, it would, people would have, would have been a little easier to swallow.
Right, because the bottom fifty feet are the garage.
Um, what's interesting is, uh, during the meeting, they did this really cool. Would you guys like to see the flyby?
It was pretty cool.
Uh, it did not go well over the internet?
No, no.
It's on YouTube. I, I checked it.
Did you?
While, while it was running, it's all jittery.
I put the link on.
You, you check the link and I went direct to YouTube. It was.
Well, when they showed us, I, I was there and it was, I, I wasn't, yeah, I wasn't impressed with it. It's just even sitting in the audience.
Yeah.
Um.
Plus we, I mean, we're, when we're, when we're so many people on Zoom, this thing starts going. Yeah. Ed, Ed actually wants to get, you know, this is a, this is a third hand laptop now for us here. We're gonna get a new machine for this office.
Yeah, I'm not sure a, a new laptop would fix your problem. I think it was bandwidth.
Yeah, that's what it is.
Yeah, although we have incredible bandwidth.
Yeah, it wouldn't be bandwidth in this building.
We're, yeah, we got fiber coming in. It's on, we got a hundred.
You think it was a function of his PC?
Right, uh, or.
Like I said, Ed, that's what Ed said this morning. He's like, I don't think it's bandwidth. We got.
It's probably.
Preening.
Part within, and graphics part within the PC.
Yeah. And I mean, like I said, this is, I think this might have been Ryan's laptop one time, then it was Lisa's and now it's ours. It's old and it's, I mean, the old laptops over there that we used to use, when that one died, we started using this one. And, you know, Elisa said to Ed, oh, we'll get another three hundred dollar laptop at Best Buy and it's like.
No.
We, we gotta get something with some more power.
You want to spend like a thousand bucks on a professional grade machines?
Oh, yay, land use.
Yes.
Not computer use.
But, uh, it did come out in the meeting, you know, that as we were looking at it, that they, they, uh, in my opinion, they did a good job. The designs of the buildings are actually somewhat appealing. They're big, obviously.
They're huge.
But from the end, you look at them and it's the same exact window spacing, slope of the roof as the great stone dwelling.
I thought that was really, I thought that was a really nice touch.
I did too.
Yeah.
I did too.
And it impressed a couple of the board members that were sitting there last night.
Um, I just wish they could shrink the whole thing down a little bit.
Yeah, but the, I mean, so, I mean, we gave them the density through the changes of zoning. And they're, they had a really good attorney that was with us.
He was pretty slick, my thinking.
Slick, he was.
Slick, that's the operative word.
He's one of the state, your most land use attorneys in the, in the, in the state.
Should be careful here.
We've got to be real careful.
Yeah.
I have not seen an application.
And it's an ongoing hearing.
It's an ongoing hearing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's part of your report and I think that's as far as we should go.
Okay.
Um, what else is going on here?
Sorry, what, what was the disposition? What did they decide?
Continue.
It's recess for a month.
Okay, um, the developer has said that they will get more information that sort of, not that the, not that the ZBA said, you gotta show us this. But the developer's like, hey, we'll get you some more stuff if that's, that's gonna help us here.
But the clock is started.
Yeah.
Yeah, they wanted the elevations, right? That was the big thing. They wanted the elevations going up to.
The contour.
Yeah, that's hard to show in any two dimensional format, you know, I mean, even really good, but the three, quote unquote, three dimensional drawings is still two dimensional format. So it's hard to show topography and so forth. That was some of the objections that, that were going on last night, but, um, we'll continue to work with the developers and I did, I think I told you guys last time that there's at least some positivity going on in another site down the road that we're working on, on that one. We do have a new TIF, uh, board member thanks to the select board, Barbara Rule has joined and we lost Ben Shapiro who's moving out of town. Um, so we're back to a full complement there. Um, Liam has been very busy. We've got a bunch of, of course, you know, the, the snow melts off and before the, the leaves come out on the trees, that's when we really start to see this, I call it soreness of the landscape. And so we've got a bunch of garbage, junk, junk cars, those kind of things. We're gonna be going up on George Hill that's stuck tomorrow, a couple sites. He's busy with some health officer stuff. Uh, that's, that's a big, uh, part of his work. Um, obviously we approved site plan for Tartar Fall and they're doing a lot of work on the final design plans from a building permit standpoint for that as you, as you guys approved last month. Um, then that's, that's pretty serious stuff, as you might imagine, too. Spider sprinkler testing and rating and all that kind of stuff. And, you know, when you, when you're putting four apartments in there, that's multifamily, so even though it's an existing building, it's a lot of complexity there.
Yeah.
Tartar Fall.
That's the one that you guys.
Shaker Village.
Or behind the Shaker Museum.
That one. Sort of electrical contract.
Fine, old G B.
Yeah.
Um, seems like a fair amount of stuff will be coming your way. I've, I've got a couple of, uh, there's at least one pretty good size, uh, lot merger that you'll probably be seeing pretty soon. It's funny because it's one that since I've been here, you guys subdivided. Now the guy wants to put it back together. So I was like, that's what you want to do? Spend all that money to subdivide? Uh, we'll, we'll hear from him. Um, I think there'll be a couple more variances. You know, the lakefront people start to come alive as the, as the snow melts off and the weather starts to turn. Um, yeah, it's a fairly busy, so, oh, and, uh, we'll talk about it in just a minute. Obviously, uh, for me, a lot of my time in the last three weeks has been taken up with the, uh, master plan task force stuff. And so we can maybe move into that section of our meeting.
Um, but first we have the minutes that we have to do.
Everybody got a copy? I'm sorry, I didn't get.
Can we, can we hold until the next meeting?
I'd love to do that.
All right.
Love to do that. Okay, anybody object to?
We'll email everything out to you guys.
Tabling the, the next discussion till our next meeting, hearing done. We are going to table that. Uh, Hop Grant, let's see. We had a stakeholders meeting. When was that? Monday or two, two Mondays ago?
It was.
Two weeks ago.
Recently.
Thursday.
Yeah. We had stakeholders meeting. We had, what, maybe a dozen people?
Be a little more than twenty.
Maybe, I don't know. Um, it was real good. Um, Steve Whitman kind of presented a big overview and there was some good discussion about, uh, you know, what people thought we ought to be doing by way of zoning. And, um, what else did we do?
Also, I, well, actually, I didn't learn a lot from that meeting. I, I, that we didn't already know, having gone through the master plan process and what was sort of determined there.
That's a great point.
Well, so reaffirmed what's.
Yeah.
The direction the town wanted.
I mean, not putting a lot of, you know.
It reaffirmed what Ken people wanted.
Yeah, I mean.
I think it was a selective group, so I, I think it was.
Really good for the consultants.
Yes, yeah.
You know, they're hearing from people that they wouldn't otherwise.
Yeah.
They also, uh, they got together before the meeting, two of them, and they.
They go around.
They spent a lot of time.
Driving around.
Navigating around. They had some good comments to share about that. It's kind of fun to hear sort of neutral third party opinions of what they see.
What, what I would, um, was hoping we'd be able to do, and maybe we can figure out a way to do this, uh, having a, a more focused shareholder meeting, like for people who live on the lake, lake association, that sort of thing. Invite them in for a discussion about issues around the lake.
Can I emcee that?
I'll emcee that.
And we go to the emcee.
I'll tell you, I'll tell you who to invite.
You know, I, I think that was the original thought and due time. Time and somewhat money constraints, um.
We combined it.
They compressed.
Remember we were gonna have just a bunch of developers?
Yeah.
Remember that? And we just ran out of time.
Well, I, I would say then that.
You know what, we, after they finish the work.
We, we can have those.
We can have our. Because that's more zoning than housing. Around the lakes.
Well, exactly.
Yeah.
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 And, and what's dawning on me that is obvious probably, again, I just didn't see it, was that they, they are really only focused on houses.
Yeah.
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 Which means that, okay, so we, we've got to do most of this ourselves and.
Well, honestly, Tim, I'm, I'm hoping that they can do the lion's share and then we tweak it, you know, especially like the, the new zones and all of that sort of stuff. I'm hoping that we can accomplish that and take care of all of the housing stuff and then we tweak it after. I'm, I'm hoping that.
Well, I, I'm, I am hoping that too, but.
Yeah.
Um, so my point is that having a listening session with people from the lake. We take, we take minutes, we take a video, um, we could do that anytime.
Hmm, yeah.
And you just park that on the shelf, that information on the shelf. When you want to sink your teeth into it, you revisit it, right? Or you remember what was said. I, I don't think we need to wait till they're done.
Right.
Do that.
I love it. I think it's totally.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to work conjuctively or cooperatively with the lake associations.
Those both like.
There's two very active associations. And if you want my opinion, I think they need to be front and center, helping us basically lead the dialogue. It is a lot of the stuff that confronts us is really gotta be on, on that. I mean, I had a call the other day from a guy on Shaker Boulevard. He said, now that the snow has melted, I've been walking down Shaker Boulevard and you wouldn't believe the amount of dog poop on the side of the road. He said, is that a problem? I said, is that a problem? That's a huge problem. We had a cyanobacteria training session here last week with Granite State Rural Water. And that is huge problem.
Yeah.
It's an unforced error too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We can control that.
Yeah, we should not let that happen. Uh, on our road, people do not pick up the waste. They don't pick it up. And that's pulling right in the water.
And so in a similar fashion, um, we've also got Shaker Village, which is, which is another group of stakeholders that would be, I think, good to pull together in an independent meeting. I would be happy to emcee that one.
Yeah.
Um, but even where we are.
Yeah.
Time wise, I'm not sure that it's realistic at this point to think that we could fully rewrite the zoning ordinance. And Eric and I were talking about this last week, that, or a couple of weeks ago, that particularly the rural district, there's a lot of stuff we'd have to tear into and pick apart, try to find examples and zoning ordinance give us, uh, suggestions, et cetera. These guys aren't really gonna do it.
I agree.
I would.
Yeah.
Pushing that way.
They're gonna give you the, the, the ends. We're gonna have to fill in the middle. I mean, we're, they're gonna give us what the zones are, but they're not gonna, we're gonna have to decide what we want to be able to put in the zones.
Right, and so someone had mentioned that maybe we just don't deal with the rural zone this time round. So in twenty twenty five, March, we don't really have a whole lot more different than we have now. I didn't like that idea, but I'm kind of warming up to that now.
I think it's a big piece, right? It's, it's a big piece and I think that that is going to be the zones that will be the most challenging.
Well, it is because it's your.
To get, to get town approval.
Well, yeah, because we got a problem with that zone. There's a problem with that zone. It's the largest zone and you've got to be able to have workforce housing in your largest zone. And right now, at five acres, you cannot build a house for under three hundred and forty thousand dollars, including five acres of land, plus the septic, plus all the land improvements. So you're gonna have to come up with either a.
In my state law, we have to do something.
Right.
Yeah.
Uh, incentive and the incentive maybe if you're gonna build workforce housing, you can get better density. You can get more density if you're building workforce housing.
I, I, I will say if you simply allow up to four units.
Right.
Which is still primary mortgage territory, you, you would meet that requirement.
You'd meet the requirement.
If you just allowed that in that zone, you would have a requirement.
And I guess the question is that enough to get it down to three hundred?
Yeah, it would be, it would be, it would be a townhouse.
Because they don't have to be big houses.
No, no, they're two bedroom.
And they don't have to be large.
And they don't have to be large, no.
You don't have to have six thousand square feet.
But it could be, it could be four townhouses.
Right, I'm just, I'm just saying.
So maybe we could come up with a tweak for the rural zone.
Right.
Well, the other two is that we've got these guys, they can cut paste. They, they do this for a living, right? They've already done this.
Well, I'm not getting that, yeah, I don't get that sense that they have, that they're very creative. I asked for a list of definitions or an outline for a zoning ordinance, which I would think they would just have right there, but no, no, no.
Yeah, I was expecting cookie cutter on a lot of it.
Yeah.
And then tweak from there. And that doesn't seem like where it's going.
So I think we should, uh, I think we should focus our efforts on what we really think we can get done between now and March. And, and I know the village is probably would say number one, yes.
Lake Shore number two.
Lake Shore two. And whether or not we get to Shaker Village, that can come late.
Yeah, because it's there.
It's, it's there and they already have their own rules.
And it's not gonna expand.
Absolutely.
I mean, I, I, you know, I think it would be good to get input from.
Right.
The various Shaker Village and what's the other word? Eastman, big ones. But I, I think we're not really gonna have. But I, I think we're not really gonna have a, a lot that they can tell us. Well, they, they. Because, because they are already have their own set of rules.
Right, but there, there, there's gonna be a lot of information we're gonna gather from that smaller focus group.
Yeah.
Right, regional, those, those areas. Um, it's the whether or not we can take that then and, 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 and create an overlay district between now and the time we need to, you know, hearings and I don't know.
And it may be as simple as either zoning ordinances that are having an effect on you in Shaker Village.
Perfect question, yes, and.
Is there something that we're doing that you would rather we weren't doing?
Yep, I would like that same question asked to another group of just developers. What prevents you from coming into Enfield and developing housing or whatever?
Right.
I'd love to hear what they would have to say.
Yeah.
And maybe it's nothing, but I, I'm, I'm guessing it's probably something.
There's, there's, it's gotta be something.
Commercial industrial, where you can probably more or less leave.
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
For now, um, save with conservation.
Yeah, save with conservation.
Yeah.
I think you make a good point, Tim.
And we may get to the village and what you wanna call the in-between district before you get to the rural.
Yeah.
Yeah. Shaker Hill, Shaker Hill Road past where the sewer ends. Areas like that, the West God Road, the.
Yes.
I just think that there's gonna probably be, my guess, is there'll be resistance from the public on changing R1, 3, and 5. I just get the feeling that, that no one wants to change the.
I don't think we're gonna, we're not gonna be changing one, cause one's gonna have the density that there's nothing we can.
Well, the lines of one are gonna be shrunk.
Right. Yeah.
Um, I mean, the boundaries moves.
For the village district, right.
Full, full dinner.
Right.
And the lake district, like we talked about, just stay with the 250 feet shoreline.
Right.
State red.
Same as the state.
And just say, hey, that's what the state uses, so.
That's what we're using.
That's what we're doing.
Yeah.
Um, and we're not gonna argue, we're not gonna discuss it.
Right.
And, but then, but then everything else, yeah.
It's a lot.
I mean, the conservation district just leave as is, is.
Yeah.
Is actually established pre-zonings.
Right.
Um, so.
Yeah.
You know, we kind of built the airplane as we were flying it with the master plans, and this time that master plan is all built and it's gonna be fine. This time, we're building the airplane with the zoning.
Yeah.
And I think it's doable, perhaps not on the timeframe that we would have liked, cause certainly the master plan took longer.
It's, it's a huge undertaking, right?
I think Tim's right. I, I think we need to, we need to stay, start closest to town.
Yeah.
Start to the districts that we know we can be, I, I agree with you, the biggest pushback's gonna be the rural. We saw it. We saw it here at that meeting. That's where the pushback was. Oh, I like five acres, I'm out in the puckers, I don't want anybody else living there.
Well, just the select board meeting with the Methodist Road. Um, it was like, I mean, I said he walked Methodist Road and knocked on 90% of the doors, and they all said, I wanna keep it open.
Right.
Um, I mean, that's why they moved it.
No, the, the feedback from the folks there was unified and very clear.
Yeah. And I, and I don't know how to, I don't know how do you, how do you manipulate the three, the three acre zone and the five acre zone to, to, uh, to make one?
Yeah.
One district, and then we know just say in the three acres or five acres, whatever your number you choose, isn't really accomplishing what we want.
No.
So how do you preserve those large open parcels, or, or, sorry, undeveloped parcels, and, and give people an opportunity to do some things on your property? Um, that balance is.
Hmm.
Well, I mean, larger properties, I don't know what acres you wanna use for cutout, but you can have mandatory cluster development versus optional. I see, I think that's, I think that's yes, uh, we'd love to explore that. There's probably a lot of potential there, but that's gonna take a lot of time to make that work right, I think, and. But that doesn't rule out the single-family home and the one lot, too. I mean, but then, to me, that just comes down to road frontage.
Right.
Um, cause then you get your spacing. And what happens behind, back, in back is, there's not a lot of control over that. Easy, there's a fields, woods, or there's whatever. Um, but the road frontage is what the people, what the public sees.
Yeah.
Rob? I would like to suggest also that, I mean, you guys, you guys, big step last year with the double ADU. The thing that I'm noticing with ADU, when people call and you say, hey, well, you do have this as an option, ADU, it's too small.
Yeah.
For, I had a call the other day, there's a, there's a lot up on Methodist Hill, 123 acres this guy owns. He's a doctor at Hitchcock.
Right.
His, uh, elderly parents from Southern New Hampshire would love to come up here and actually sort of move in on the lot. I told him, well, here's what your option, you can't build a second house on that lot as current zoning is telling us, but you can do an ADU, and you can do a detached. Oh, oh, okay, how, how's that work? Well, here you go. And so I gave it to him, and, and when I said 800 square foot, he's like, no, we're not. We're not downsizing that far, you know, that's too much for a, you know, a successful couple with handsome.
Number would they, would they be content with?
Would they look?
At the state, I think the conversation has gone up to either 1,000 or 1,200.
1,200. 1,200 is 1,200 for the first one, and I think 800 for a second interior one.
So you might, with a detached, make it 1,200, and attached, make it 800. I don't know, I mean, those are the kind of things.
I.
That's some serious flexibility there.
Yeah, that's the one of, probably the last meeting, I don't know, where, um, Ian was in, and he mentions the, um, people asking for ADUs and the size was, that we have is just too small for what they want. I just basically Googled ADUs, uh, build, build, build an ADU, and it's like, all these pages just popped up. Pre, pre-approved plan, not pre-approved, but.
Yeah.
Pre.
Design.
Design plan, buy your plan, here's your plans, you buy your plans, find your builder. And it was like, a lot of them were 900.
Yeah.
There was a whole, pages of 900 or less.
Well.
And then somewhere on, you know, 1,000.
Yeah, huge difference between.
I keep saying, my.
Yeah.
My house is 900.
1,200.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. Well, I think the, yeah, in the village, it's, it's gonna be a moot point, right?
Right, right, right.
It's already built out.
Space.
What's that then?
Yeah. Well, uh, but also, we don't even need, we don't even really need to have an ADU provision in the village, cause you can just do what you want, but. Yeah, you've got the density, the ability.
You've got the density.
Yeah.
Right.
Um, so, so in the rural area, yeah, that, we'll have to come up with a number.
But to Rob's point, what a perfect example of a doctor with 123 acres that wants to put his parents. I mean, it's, it's perfect.
That's what I was saying last time, multi-generational.
Yeah.
Wow, that.
Yeah, we could fix that pretty quick.
We can fix that very easily.
Reasons are done.
And I, I think what we're talking about, at least some conversation that I've had with people on the state level, is let's look at the size of a two-car garage that's exterior. And I think that worked out to a little bit less than 1,200 or 1,200 and some odd. And let's take that as a, a guideline, because people could take their two-car garage and they could either build up or knock it down and use the same footprint.
Twenty-four by 24, it's 576 times two, uh, 1,150 feet.
Right.
Well, I mean, it's the square footage, the exterior, how is the square footage calculated?
I always tell people it's the conditioned space, so E-walls, attic, basement.
Yeah.
You know.
Okay, so it's.
Plus it's a heated basement. Uh, so yeah, living space, conditioned space, conditioned space.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, but if you allow multiple buildings and four units, then it's all moot point anyway, cause.
Right, yeah. Right.
So maybe that, now, perhaps we can't play with the, the demarcation between R3 and R5. Cause what do you do, go to R4.5 or?
Yeah.
You know, you're gonna, you're gonna tick people off in the other three.
I think it would be easier to get public support if we, if we were able to say, hey, the three and the five acres is not changing, that's not changing, but here's what you can do on the property.
You can do it within them.
You have new, new housing ability in those, in those lots.
Yeah, to your friend's point that called.
Eventually, I wanna see the 3 and 5 change to something that's not a specific number.
Acre, acre driven.
Yeah.
Right.
Um, except, that just results in things up here that we just really would like in the future.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think we'll gain some acceptance if we call it the rural district rather than R5 or R3. And just, you know, just giving it sort of a, an umbrella name of what the district is for, um, will perhaps disguise some of the changes that we might wanna make to the boundaries.
Well, but unless we're gonna come up with a way to solve problem of, of how do you otherwise deal with the rural district if you don't say it's an R, it's a three-acre.
It has the size.
Acre man.
Yeah.
Right, what is it? I think we're gonna need to just leave it 3 and 5 for the time.
Tickerarily.
Tickerarily. And then add do the ADU stuff.
I mean, what another option would be to do, so Corners did this 10 years, more than that, 15, 20 years ago. They took their larger district and expanded the, they had like an R5 and an R10 or something like that, somebody asked, 3 and 5. They made everything R10, but they gave everybody within the R5. Obviously, there were existing lots of grandfathers, so they had no issues, who might have had more acreage with a plan to subdivide in the future, a year to do that subdivision under the old rules. So if somebody was in the, so if you expanded it, so it's all R5, so now the R3 becomes R5. You give everybody within the R3 a chance, like, okay, you had six, your plan was to subdivide, you can do that before, or you'll be, you gotta make that decision in a period of time.
That might work.
As a, as a way to, to get a single district already that doesn't really change the rules for anybody there.
Um, well, it has merit, but, but I, I'm thinking that that town, the R10 was where they wanted to end up. It wasn't a transition.
Well, but, but they were, perhaps, and I, I, I don't know. But, but I guess what I'm saying, but that would allow you to get the rural district, all as one district at this step, and then.
Yeah, have a transition.
You know. Just as a, something to consider.
Cause if, if we're gonna muck with the boundaries of the village district.
You're changing the other data.
We're, we're gonna, you know, everything else has to change a little bit as well. All right, everything, no, we just be.
Well, R3, R3 and R5.
Well, the R1 and R3.
Again, I didn't hear you.
Right, currently, the R1 abuts R3.
Right.
Yeah.
So the places where there's R1, which is.
Now. All the way up. Shaker Hill.
Yeah.
From, from the sheep farm.
Right, so it's either that, that area, yes, the R1 gets closer to the core village.
Right.
The line on the opposite side becomes R3.
Yeah. So my two-and-a-half acre lot that I can subdivide now, I won't be able to.
We'll give it a year. Yeah, one, one good example.
Well, you.
Wait, as soon as things.
What I'm saying is, you're, and I subdivide, but I'm not building, which means I'm paying for two lots now. I'm paying taxes on two lots, because you've, you've made me subdivide in order to keep the density and the ability to have.
Two of the parks is.
Right, I mean, I mean, I'm not gonna sell my house, but there's, I mean, you know.
Yeah.
Jamie Martin's next door is, is three acres, which means he can't subdivide it, he could subdivide it into three right now.
Right, there's always gonna be winners and losers.
Well, yeah, but everybody.
You know, well.
I guess what I'm saying is, most of them are close to two-acre lots going up Shaker Hill Road. And to make them threes, I'm not sure. Well, that's not doing what you want it to do, cause you want more density, and you're taking away density.
Well, we want density where we want it, not, so maybe there's a more of a transition, maybe there is.
So, so we actually think. When, when, when I lived in Vermont, I owned three contiguous lots. And as long as they were contiguous, the listers, the assessors treated it as essentially one lot. Yeah, but that's not how it's done here.
That, that, yeah, we don't do it, yeah.
It's not, I mean, I think part of, like, right where you are.
Right.
I think there's even a bigger battery decision, cause you guys are on, on water.
We're on water and not sewer.
But I would, but I would include you guys on the, uh, the village side of the line. And that side of the line, if you're not on sewer, would have a smaller than R3.
Yeah.
Uh, requirement.
Yeah.
Yeah, we complex.
But I would, but, because if somebody said, hey, I wanna run, if you decided you wanted to run sewer out there and you wanted to pay for it.
That's right.
No, I'm just.
I got a density eight now.
Right.
Yes.
But, but that's.
But that's true.
That's another potential scenario.
I know.
And without, with water already there.
Yeah.
You know.
Yeah.
So I would draw you guys on the.
On the smaller side.
Yeah.
Yeah.
On the village side of that.
Because there had been talk, there had been talk about running it around Le Pen Circle, sewer, because it's bad land.
Right, for drainage, yeah.
Yeah, it's bad drainage, bring it in through, bring it across the Masoma from Route 4. Cause then it could be a gravity feed.
Mm-hmm.
Um, yeah, yeah, cause we're in that weird area.
Yeah.
Where we've got water, but we don't have sewer.
But when you drive, when you're coming down Shaker Hill Road and you, you get to your area.
Yeah.
It feels like you've just entered the village.
Yeah.
And their houses are fast closing.
Yeah, when you pass.
When you pass.
West God, oh, where the water ends.
That's where it's split.
That's where I would put the, the village district line.
Yeah.
And you'd have to have.
At the bottom of the hill, give or take.
Well, we're west, it's right before the bottom of the hill.
Right, that's where you're.
Yeah. It's where, uh.
Livingston Lodge.
Livingston Lodge Road splits off.
Yeah.
That's, one house up from that is where the water ends. It doesn't go as far as Nancy Smith's.
You went right down West Get Road and everything to the east, west is.
Right.
Village, the east is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's rural, yeah.
Kind of a iffy one about what do you do with Livingston Lodge.
We got stuck there Saturday night with my son's truck, couldn't get up the hill.
I think that would be in the rural, because it does not have water.
Doesn't have water. Yeah, doesn't have water at all.
So somewhere here, you transition across to Lake Street Stevens.
Yeah.
You know, cause the, this is Lake.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
And then it gets a little squirrel over here.
Yeah.
And then where do you draw the line of Maple Street? Uh, Kurt and I were thinking we'd follow the Laramie Farms.
Yeah.
I follow the same, all of Maple Street has water.
Yeah.
So I'd use the same logic as West God Road.
And then you go up Dry Bridge Hill on Route 4 to some point, and you say that's this far corner is rural, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So we headed pretty close.
Yeah, cause they. The trailer park doesn't have water.
They do now. They do now. What? Water, they've put in a, I don't know if they connected, but there's a new fire hydrant right there.
Okay.
That was put in, uh, but like, uh, Keith Ford all the way at the end has some water.
Yeah.
The very last house.
The very last house does.
We are?
Yeah.
Uh, on Maple Street, the water, every house, and may, I don't know if every house is connected, but every house has water in front of it. Majority of houses are connected.
Yeah, going up Maple.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure they all are.
I think so too, but I.
Yeah.
Can't make it.
And uh.
Totally.
Um. The, it seemed like we should, we should include all of Laramie, cause no matter what.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, something's gonna get built up there, right? We don't know how tall it is, but. It's gonna be big.
Mm-hmm.
It's gonna look like the village, so.
Well, sewer already goes up to Laramie, right?
No, they'll have to put that in.
They're gonna have to bring it up, it doesn't come up that far.
Right.
Okay. Yeah.
I think the sewer stuff's somewhere around First Mommy's House.
Okay.
Like, I'm not sure exactly where it's somewhere in there.
Right.
Nine o'clock, folks.
Yeah, we gotta.
We should, uh, we should wrap this up.
Um, well, are we, are we keen on having this lake association?
Well, you you'd wanna wait till the summer residents are here.
Yeah, right. So you probably want to, yeah, you probably look.
June anyway.
June, June at the earliest.
I I would almost suggest, because I would think in June, we're gonna be pushing. Because of the July deadline.
What is it, July what is the?
End of July.
So, make it August.
Yeah.
Make it August.
We'll still be here.
Yeah, and you know, we should probably get, um. Who knows Lindsay the best, we should get Lindsay to facilitate.
She's good at it.
She's good.
She's so good at it.
We'll just tell her it's part of the master plan.
Excellent idea.
I think it's just stay with June. It's gonna be on a separate date than one of our meetings anyway, and. I don't see how that crowds anything, we we need the information so we can.